Are you? There, just gave me a big recording is in progress and I'll have to say got it. All right, everyone, welcome. This is a committee, the whole presentation to municipality of the district of Yarmouth from Constable Mario Gagnon. I'd like to call this being the order land acknowledged it. I what acknowledgement, I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we are on the ancestral lands of the Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq. The ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, a presentation on cyber school security program by Constable Mario. This presentation is to learn about the cybersecurity program that is being delivered in our schools. So with that said, Constable Mario Gagnon, thank you very much for coming. I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, John. I know my name being French is a mouthful, so I'll just so it's Goojow, but it you're not the first and I'm sure you won't be the last one, the butcher, the last name. So that's all good. So I'm the I'm the school safety resource officer for Yarmouth County detachment. I've been in the position since August 2018. So for this is basically would be the start of halfway through my fourth school year. Unfortunately, with COVID and then that's the thing to some of those things I will talk about. There's a lot of stuff that would have been done or should have been done or was planned to be done. But due to COVID, there's been a lot of curveballs and changes last minute that kind of put some halt to certain projects, right? So I'm I'm actually usually pretty tech savvy, although I will say for Zoom, that's a newer thing for me. So the whole thing about sharing presentation and screens and all that, I was more gonna kind of talk to you guys about what I do generally in a day to day basis, specifically targeting cyber safety. I was hoping maybe perhaps when in the near future, we can actually meet in person where I could actually kind of show some of the presentation and if there was some relevant questions or anything that may be so. Yeah, I apologize, I'm at home and my son just kind of crawl right next to me. Just give me a quick second. I think there's just a little guy that wants to say hi right quick and then we'll carry on with the with the the meeting. So this is my son Mateo is just over a year old. So he just I just got home from work and he wanted to come see me. So I'll turn over to his mom, so we'll we'll carry over with the meeting. Sorry about that, guys. Thanks, hon. Do you mind closing the door? Sorry about that, guys.
No, that's quite all right. You never know what happens in Zoom meetings.
No need to apologize.
So yeah, essentially in a day's work, so my understanding and just to be clear, is this just a municipality of Yarmouth? Or is that also including municipality of Argyle? Because in my head, I was trying to maybe talk to some specifics, maybe to certain school with certain districts, so I didn't want to get my my things confused here.
This is only with the municipality district of Yarmouth.
Okay, perfect. Because what my job, what happens is I'm involved with both municipality and board school, both the school board, which the TCRC and the CSOP, which basically would mean all the following schools that I have under my bracket, Carlton, Port Maitland, Drummond Heights, Maple Grove, Meadowfields, Plymouth, Belleville, Public West, Paramba and Wedgeport. And I also technically should count the Tuscan St. Anne Remote College as well. So I have a total of 11 school under my umbrella to take care of. So as you can see, it can get busy at times. So mainly the main thing about cyber safety is, like I said, it's I feel like it's been in two times. Like if I separate the pandemic into a little bit before into the start of the pandemic and after, I found that the biggest trend for cyber safety issues for part one was mostly the sharing of intimate pictures and what we commonly call sexting, which was a big issue within the schools, which is funny because I was just hearing on the radio today that there's the survey about the Nova Scotia provincial statute with regards to intimate sharing of pictures and cyber bullying. I don't know if that has like, I thought it was an odd coincidence that I heard that just on my way home, but it's it was definitely a hot topic for a while. And I find more recently, the last six months, I'm suspecting probably because of the trend of COVID and the there's there's definitely a exigent strain on the kids and everybody's mental health because of that, that lately it's been mostly attached to unfortunately, just just as even as far as today, I was dealing with a case of that sort in Maple Grove. People, the kids are getting quite, for lack of better words, nasty online and it's a lot of counsel to suicide. Potential investigation, I find that that's been the latest trend, telling kids telling other people, kids to commit suicide, basically, which is a bit scary to tell you the truth. So that's from my experience as a school officer of last three and a half years, I felt like this is what these were the last in two times, those were the trends, more or less. Now, that being said, I also and I'm not sure if the the council is aware also of the police in provincial police and school board protocol, which I find as much as within the police force and a lot of the boards and schools, they're not even aware of that. So there's no provincial agreement within school and police for like to help interact and kind of guide, I guess, me being the liaison, I would kind of be guided by that, but it's not something that was necessarily brought up. At first, when I first took the job and it's something that I've kind of, I feel like I've been learning and as I went on with the job, so. As for presentation, I will say, like, for example, this Thursday, I'm going to Port Maitland School to do a presentation on 911, the use of 911. There was usually, there's usually like a motivation or unfortunately, an incident that leads to targeting a specific issue. So for this was, I don't know if some of you heard it last week, I think a school bus driver got pulled over by the police because there was some kids dial 911 off of the cell phone. And many people don't know that when you don't, even though you don't have a SIM card, you can still call 911. And some of the kids actually dial 911 off the school bus and us while trying to pin the location kept on moving, come to find out it was actually on the school bus and the school bus got boarded up by the police. So now the kids were all impressed by this and oh, the police got here. So now it was almost like a hot topic list down 911, so we can see the police. Hence why this Thursday, I'm going to Port Maitland to make sure to express how dangerous and making a frivolous 911 call is actually a a finable offense. It's a hefty, almost $700 fine under the 911 Act of Nova Scotia. So so it all depends on the on the topic at hand, but I will say typically the three schools that would get most my intentions will be Drummond, Maple Grove and Pad just because of the age group, junior high and up. That would typically require more assistance, more help, sit down sometimes with the principal on certain issues that I will just advise some that are would formally involve a plea into investigation, but with the hat that I'm wearing, a lot of times I'd be just sitting sitting in on some meetings and just kind of provide guidance and advisory, just so we we do kind of like this learning curve. Because, for example, by definition, if we charge everybody under the criminal code of the criminal justice sack exactly by the book, unfortunately, we would charge about close to 80% of all the kids in school with all the sharing of pictures and all that that's going on. People don't realize how problematic this is. And one of the biggest the biggest hurdles for that is parents a either don't know how to monitor their kids, don't want to, or the best babysitter is often a tablet or a cell phone rather than spending time with your kids. So this I find is one of the biggest hurdles that gives themselves is the monitoring of the parents, which a lot of times require me to go to parents and teachers meeting. But the sad part is most parents that do need to hear this are usually the parents not showing up at those meetings after the fact. So. So like I said, I wish I had some fancy presentation PowerPoint. I feel like I next time we're able to meet in person, I would love to show all the presentations. But what usually happens is I get a lot of the material, what we call in the RCP, the National Youth Services. So they have pre made presentations on impaired driving, cannabis drugs, all the cyber safety sexting. I have about 15 or 20 basically, and what I do is I retailor them because the material, the content is all nice coming from Ottawa. But I keep in mind that if you want to present to kids and you want to make an impact, you gotta you gotta tweak the presentation, gotta make it nice and moving and funny and interactive because if not, the kids won't remember a single message out of it. And with technology, the attention span of them is definitely an issue. So it's something that I try to tailor to the flavor of the area or flavor of the month. If there's a specific topic at hand that we need to talk about. Other than that, I I'm trying to figure out if I one, the biggest thing I forgot is the safe plans, a safe plan is one of the key components of my job. It's not really involving cyber safety, but at the same time, it can be at times. So like the lockdown drills that we do usually twice a year. It doesn't involve form of technology also, but that's just one of one of my key roles and a lot of partnerships with organizations like Schools Plus, Shift House, the Women's Center. I'm trying to think, there's so many that I just top of my head. I'm trying to remember all the the key partners, but a lot of time, there's like some partnership going on to be able to handle that. But a lot of all those works that all the work that we do together, I would, I would say 90 to 95% of the time stem from social media online. It generates from that and there's an impact in school that we end up having to deal with. And that that's just, I guess that's just the reality and even more so now that the pandemic had kids locked down at at home. There's definitely a spike in that, there's a spike in in the cyber crimes and there's a spike also in mental health, definitely. So that's that's, I guess, the short and medium version of what I do. I'm not sure if you guys have specific questions, I'll try to answer them to the best of my knowledge. If I don't know the answer, then I will definitely get it for you. Or maybe Jenny, if there's answers I don't have, I can maybe email the answers to you when I find them tomorrow. There might be some stuff I have to look up maybe from our from from my office or from home, there may be some stuff I may not have for answers for you. I think Patty has a question.
All right, I was, I see that Patty, I don't, before you answer the question, anyone has any questions, please put up your hand on your feature because this is a learning process for me as well. We're trying to, I see Nix go up. And to staff, where do I see who put their hand up first?
If you click on the button below that says participants.
Yeah.
It will, it will show all the participants on your right hand side of your screen and the order that they put up their hand would be the order in the list.
No, Patty went up first and I'm.
Yeah. Okay, Patty did go first and also on the screen. Or I don't know if it's only just me because I'm the host, but it would show the order that they put their hand up as well on the screen.
Yeah, top left is always the first person that goes.
Okay, so that's I learned something today. So Patty, you have the floor. I know you have a question, then it'll be, I see Nick.
Oh, thank you, Mario. I'm a former teacher, so it really saddens me to hear what's happening in terms of the cyber bullying and I understand because I I've seen it, but it sounds like this whole sexting situation has gotten way worse. What I would like to know is what are the consequences? Like when when this happens? What do the schools or do when people are caught doing this?
So that's a good question, Patty, like so every principal, I know the school board has their protocols and mandates. So for example, I know schools, if if you get into a fight, it's an automatic five day suspension. So there's some protocols they have to respect, but depending on the situation and if it's a repeat offender, is it the first time that this student has done that or has there been multiple times? Although I'm a police officer, I do not believe in charging youth in, even though they can get charged as young as 12 years old on your under the Youth Criminal Justice Act. So my goal is to make a learning curve as long as the victims are not impacted long term and there's like some serious consequences. I always try to use that as a learning curve. I've done many times where as a one on one presentation, make sure the person got the message, sometimes a single event generated a school wide or a class wide presentation on the topic. For example, you mentioned like the sexting. A lot of times, so what I like to do is I always find and it kind of sets me to say that. And I got to be careful when I say this because I do wear the hat of a police officer, but sometimes I feel like the Department of Justice doesn't always crack down with sentences as maybe as it should. So I find sometime with the school consequences and me like I'll have them to write a an apology letter to the to the victim, myself and all the staff that involved and all the people, all the task force that it got involved to deal with the matter that has a bigger impact than what a judge would possibly give just a warning or finger wagging in front of the courts. So sometimes I feel we got to get creative. We got a student one day to come in and I think fill out the the pop machine with the presence of one of the TAs or like we trying to find something, I think in house, I try to keep it as far away as I can from criminal code, if I can help it.
Oh, great. I'm really glad to hear that because I agree with you. I just don't think they understand long term consequences of their actions and what impact that has on the individuals who are made to be victims, which brings about another question. Do you ever use restorative justice? Is that something that's used frequently in the schools? If it's a whole group?
I have actually, so our restorative justice lady Emily Watkins, who's been back recently from Matley, before that it was Sydney Newell. So I know them by name, they're considered friends and colleagues. So I've I've sat down with them and went over some specific cases with them. Usually restore of justice for me would be the last step before it would actually come to a charge. That means like it was serious enough, but I don't want to necessarily lay a criminal code charge to screw up this kid's life because like a chrome record does entail a lot of stuff. So we'll try to, it's usually if the victim was deprived of a property or there's some monetary damages, instead of going through that, then I think restored justice can kind of give at least a little bit of closure to the victim without going through the courts.
And and do you find this process successful? So there aren't that many second offenders in in this situation?
The thing with restorative justice is they have the the offender has to be willing participant and also taking responsibility. So it's not always an avenue that you want to take because there's been times where I had a teenager that, for lack of better words, getting the attitude that self justifying what they did. So in that case, I I'd go more on the consequences and more bother Emily for restore justice because it would be a waste of her time in the system's time.
No, yeah, and no, I'm actually not specifically restorative justice, but just specific consequences like you suggested work around the school or something, letter writing, exactly, is that, does that often prevent them from doing it again or?
I definitely find it, it's got a bigger impact in the courts. I mean, I've I've laid a couple of tickets then now, for example, the Cannabis Act, now that cannabis is legal, I actually gave a ticket to a youth about having possession, but it wasn't his first time. The first time you had a talking, you had talking to principal and the biggest thing is having good relation with principal, they keep me in the loop. Okay, this is the second time, the third time, write a ticket, had the parents in, the parents, you and I made sure to have a have a chat with the parents saying, you're you as the parents, I understand you want to protect your child, but you're not paying for that that fine, that kid has to find and so on. And I made an agreement, the parents were willing participant. So sometimes it's just got to think outside the box and you want to make it a consequence for them, not for the parents responsible, because sometimes it's it's out of their control, right?
Good, thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Thank you very much for that, Patty. Next one up would be Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is kind of more of just a personal question with a little bit of insight. You know, I'm 20 years removed from high school. And what is it like now is I from I have a teenager that, you know, stepdaughter that lives in the home and it just seems like the majority of social contact is done over the phone. Do you, does the RCMB get called to? I remember going to a few high school parties where you guys showed up and I just don't see that anymore. Do people interact on a, you know, in person basis anymore? Is the majority of contact contact done through social media?
It's been hard with the with pandemic for sure. I found even from the start, when I started as a school officer in 2018, I remember showing up and the first reaction from the kids, oh, the popos here and you know, some some kind of comments like that. To say it wasn't some long footwork to build those relationships and make it an impact. But there's after a year, a full school year, I would say, I started to see a difference now, like if I go around the schools, it's it's not all the popos, yo, Mary was here, hi, Officer Mario and like the 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 interactions very, very nice. It's just that there were some times during a specific log downs where I wasn't necessarily allowed to go in the school unless there was a specific, I wouldn't say urgent issue, but if there was a call for service to say the least, like there was something that police needed to attend. If not, I wasn't just attending either to build rapport with the kids, with the staff. Because part of my job also is if you don't build rapport with those kids and those staff, then when you're trying to get information and you're trying to present something, it doesn't have the same credibility and people tend to forget that because unfortunately, we're a society that's stats driven. And if you don't bring stats, then it's 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 seeing, well, what what is your job justification? But part of my job is a bit of PR technically with the students and the staff and I think it went a long way and I still wish it would go further because the pandemic, I felt like it slowed down my 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 footwork for that. But it it has been a lot online, but we're doing what we can with the, I guess, hopefully this pandemic comes to an end soon.
So how do you view like, but the way, but just the way the kids socially interact? Like, is it compared to when you were in school? Like, I just don't see them.
Oh.
Either at all.
Oh, God. Remind me how old you are, Nick, just because trying to gauge the difference of when you went to school to when 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 I went to school.
Clearly have more hair than I do, so I'm 38. So I'm guessing you're early 30s.
I appreciate that, but I'm 30, I'm 37, turning 38 this April, but I do appreciate that. I will say, at the end of my high school, that's where the whole, the start of the internet and the ICQ chats and then it went to messenger started. So I kind of, I was in that generation where I seen the before and I seen the after. It's definitely a turnaround. I find the biggest thing, though, is most schools are pretty strict for interactions, like keeping your cell away, keep yourselves in your locker and stuff like that. But the biggest problem is and with the pandemic, everybody was saying we need structure and we need to put the kids back in school, which is true, but a lot of it stems from online nights and weekends at home, which then has an impact in school, which then all of a sudden involves myself and the principal and the counselor for stuff that didn't even happen on school property, which is the biggest headache we've had to deal with. So the interaction starts from online, there's a lot of boasting and showboating online that then kids show up Monday, there's a kid that gets picked on or laughed at and then things start from there, then I get a call out, I'll get a call from a say from Sean Kenny at Maple Grove, hey, Mario, I got this going on, can you stop by? Yes, this is, this would be like a typical interaction or typical day of the things I would have to deal with. And they all stem from online after after school hours typically.
Did our CMP get called any private home parties anymore? Like, do they, do they even exist?
Um. I mean, technically, you're not supposed to be more than 10 right now, but that doesn't say it's not happening. But to my knowledge, recently, I will say, knock on wood, it's been fairly good that way. I mean, if we don't have the information or we we're not, we're not previewed to the information, we can't necessarily do it. But even if I I would overhear say something happening on a Friday night, then I'll make sure it'll send an email to the crews that's working Friday night. Hey, just keep an eye out, there's supposed to be a party over there. I heard that, just to kind of keep things under control and, you know, to avoid underage drinking and all that stuff, right?
All right, next one that has their hands up would be Lauren, then Daniel is next.
Thanks, Warden. It might be a sensitive question I'm going to ask, but do you think the the lack of discipline by the parents to the to the children is a factor in how they're acting in school?
That is a great question, so I got to be cautious because I think there could be a police officer Goojow speaking and they could also be personally Mario speaking. I think the biggest issue is the lack of accountability from the parents. I even and I mentioned Sean Kenny because I have a really good relationship with Sean Kenny and Maple Grove is as big of a school for just junior high requires a lot of attention. But I know even we tried even when he to implement something that when he sent a message through the parents mail newsletter to say, hey, parents, I need your help because a lot of the stuff stemmed from, like I said, outside of school hours. Sean actually had a call on Christmas morning from parents. That's how involved he is and I can't, I can't emphasize enough how the admins from school, the school counselor involve, they try to help, they go above and beyond. And some of the parents are still thinking that we're targeting their their children as in like, we're not helping them, which I've seen firsthand the work that's being done. And I would say if I could have two of me and five more of those principals, I would take them tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
No problem.
Daniel, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So so Mario, I guess. I guess part of this, there's a little confusion for me. So so technically, you only deal with the things that happen at the school. Like I, I like Nick have a teenage daughter and gosh, social media is a killer as far as I'm concerned. It's 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 the worst thing ever. I was in school long before you guys and I'd love to go back to that way. I just find like, like you said, a lot of things happen on the weekends and on the evenings and it boils over into school. But but what happens? I mean, if if you're through school, what happens with the stuff on the evenings and the weekends? Because I mean, is is kids get bullied and I mean, sexting is, geez, that's so much I don't want to know, I guess, unfortunately, but it's it's a part of social, social media. But the bullying stuff really scares me. It gets, it gets pretty bad and you know, I've seen it firsthand, I've seen it. I know friends, I've anyway, been parts of it. It's just there doesn't seem to be any. I just find the victim doesn't seem to get anywhere, like the the bullies, like you said, sometimes, you know, it's writing letters and stuff and then, you know, then they get, then they start bullying because they had to write the letters and and it's 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 a vicious circle, I guess. And I just wonder, I know people don't like to write the tickets and I'm probably thinking more in the lines of older teenagers as opposed to the kids like at Maple Grove and stuff. But it's just scary how fast it goes and how much stuff spreads and I know kids when they're bullied and and I mean, I hate to say it, I was bullied a little bit when I was a kid too, and it some, a lot of it sticks to you and it never, it's never gone out of your mind, you know what I mean? Like, you know, you can receive a letter, it's never, to me, it's never enough. So I'm just wondering, like, at what point, at what point should RCMP be brought in and and, you know, when they're brought in, what can, what can they do? I mean, I you know, I I understand you're making the connections and and things like that, but at some point, like, sometimes the what what the end result might outweigh those. You know, and it's hard to. You know, and it's hard to find, it's hard to pick and choose, I'm sure, I'm sure you don't know which one is going to lead to, we'll say, a suicide. Or or, you know, a kid just going off. Um, it's, you know, you're not a psychiatrist, you're not going to know when somebody's going to blow. And how how do you get to that point? Like, how do you know, how do you know when to start bringing people in?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Like you said, and I'm not a psychiatrist and even the psychiatrist can't even predict that properly. So um, I I think right now we're faced with a cultural problem that we're trying to all deal with. Um, I mean, to say that there's a perfect solution, there isn't. Uh, like I said, um, to always try to do the restorative part first. Uh, the 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 what goes in the way in my justification, if we charge or not, is is this a repeat offender? Is this a first timer? Is just a bump along the road? If it's just a bump along the road and it's a typically good teenager, just got dragged into the wrong crowd of friends and he does this one silly thing. I I I don't feel it's it's okay to pin that that kid as long as he learns and he doesn't do it again. Now, that's why where it comes down to repeat offender, it comes down also to what's the nature of of the offense? And the biggest thing also is, um, um, excuse me. Um, I I will also look at, um, what uh, the parents of the the victim and the parents. Uh, to me, the biggest thing is how do the the victims and the parents of the victim want to handle this? Uh, am I going to make things worse for them if I intervene in a certain way? Because my goal ultimately is to keep the victims and their parents safe and comfortable and what the outcome's going to be. So I have always an open conversation with them and I'll I'll ask them, okay, how do you see this going? Here's option A, B, C, D, or usually I can go as far and usually that's kind of my my preface is. We can do, just talk about it like we're doing, or we can go all the way to arrest and charge, and there's many other options in between. How do you feel comfortable? I've offered some mediation when the uh, the youth feel comfortable in talking. And in in doing that, I've had a lot of positive outcome. There's one in particular that comes to mind that it was pretty brutal. Uh, I remember a kid got literally blatantly assaulted and a blitz attack got hurt. And after talking and after uh, um, mediating with both families, which parents were on board. These two kids turned out to be friends and apologized to each other and realized that it was another negative leader that was kind of. Uh, man- manipulating all this and kind of stood up against that person in a proper way. And that's what I said, I said, I don't expect you to ever take a punch or get bullied. It's okay to stand up, but do it the right way. And that's always something that I've said, and I've had some really good outcomes from it. But there, to say that there's a a black and white answer, there's none because every case is different. And um, I would, I wish I had a magical answer for you, Daniel, but I I I don't. And the reality is we are dealing with a cultural problem with social media. And it's, uh, like I said, the biggest thing for me is the lack of parent accountability. I kind of always joke about it when we were young, the before the times of internet and cell phones. If you wanted to date uh, someone and you called home, if the dad wasn't happy, what was on the phone, you would hang up. If uh, it also, if the parents were gone for a couple hours and they were leave their their young teenager at home. They wouldn't be leaving their teenager, here's a, here's a knife, here's a gun, here's a, here's a pile of dirty magazine, we'll be back in three hours, enjoy yourself. People laugh when I say that, but it's no different when you leave your kids unmonitored online, when they're not making responsible choices. And it's trying to convey that to the parents, because we're at a point where I know schools are doing a lot. I know I'm doing a lot, I've been doing a lot of presentations about school safety, uh, online safety and stuff like that prior to and at the start of pandemic. I feel now we have to find a way to think outside the box to reach out to parents and I'm, we're still thinking about how we can do that.
So, I don't know if you can tell me this, but but years passed, and I'm talking many years ago, many, many moons, when cell phones first started. I always thought when you signed up and you got a cellphone and you used to get a contract, you had to sign off that you wouldn't like do cyber. Well, back then it wasn't cyberbullying, it was just, you know, you wouldn't. I, maybe I'm imagining that, but I always thought that was part of your contracts when you first got, when cell phones, I mean, years ago. So, and and I agree with you, like, a lot of times it it comes down to the the parent. You know, you got to get through the parent to help get through to the kid. I mean, obviously, and um.
So I I I think the age you're talking about, Daniel, is it used to be analog uh, before? And now it's being digital and smartphones, now it's all, i- i- it's all data usage through I P address, you need the I M I E number. Uh, there's a lot of jargon and all that and right now that uh, people, it's it's like when you sign up, say you sign up on the social media. Tell me, tell me honestly, who has a social media here who read all the fine print all the way down instead of just clicking accept and next? But technically, we all agree to it, who really reads it? I don't think anybody.
No, I I.
And that's the problem.
I I'd like to tell you, I read it, but no.
I don't think anybody here would have read it, to be perfectly honest, I'd be very surprised.
And and I agree with you that COVID right now, I mean. I think, oh, men- mental, mental health issues right now are probably higher than ever. And, you know.
Absolutely.
With anxiety and children and stuff as it is nowadays, and and homeschooling and it's, you know, it's just, it's a big package. It's a big package and you've got a big job ahead of you, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Toria?
You, Mr. Chair, and and thank you, Mario, for taking the time to meet with us. So the presentation tonight came about through the Joint Police Advisory Committee. And we learned there a little bit about um, Mario's role and the service he provides to our community. And so, you know, in recommending this presentation tonight to council, the main goal, you know, was to improve awareness. Uh, to the broader public about the work that the uh, force is doing inside our schools to address the very thing that Mario just highlighted. And it's, is to, you know, shine a light on the supports that school administrators and uh, Mario and his peers and colleagues. They need in order for the program to be successful. So my question, Mario, to you is. What can the municipality do to support you to, you know, broadcast the messaging, to be sharing resources? And and to help improve kind of the depth and breadth of awareness about uh, about the work you do to to the broader community? How can we help you?
Um, I'm, I'm actually happily surprised that you bring that up, I I I love this. I uh, I'll be honest, you catch me off guard because I feel like there could be many ways. But um, I mean, I don't know, uh, you know, do we? I almost hate to say this, do we fight fire with fire? We use social media in return. I don't think it's necessarily the solution. Uh, but there's definitely need to be an awareness out there. Um, like I said, for the biggest hurdle was trying to get to the parents, so how do we get the message across to the parents? I know, like I said, I I use Mr. Sean Kenny as an example, you try to send the newsletter to the parents asking. I, parents, I need your help to help me monitor your kids online, so we don't have this many repercussions at school and so on. Um, I know, uh, one little project I was uh, gonna launch actually next Monday. But I'm postponing it just a little bit because again, of COVID. Is uh, those three schools that I mentioned that from junior eye and senior eye up there, which is Peb, Drummond and um. Um, Maple Grove is, I typically work four days a week, ten hours, ten hours a day. Uh, just because I found, I found out that eight hours a day, by the time I visited school and all that. And the time I wanted to file some reports, I was always uh, staying late anyways, so it made more sense. And three of the four days, I would probably get the Monday, say, for example, do my own things, prepare my presentation, do my emails. So, but I would actually set base camp out of one of these schools to enhance visibility, to be more accessible to the kids. Uh, now that some of the relations built and it's only going to get better, so the kids will know, hey, say I'm at, I'm at Maple Grove Tuesday. Uh, well, if I have a little thing I want to bring up tomorrow, I'll I'll come see him at that room, because he knows that 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 kid knows that I'm here. Wednesday will be Drummond, Thursday will be Peb, for example. And I've sent an email, uh, I I had a group email with all the principals involved at these schools and they're really on board with the project. The only thing now is because of those restrictions, instead of starting, I was gonna test it for four weeks. See the result and ask a debrief from the principal. And if this was a success, I was gonna implement it for uh, for the next next school year. But I'm just gonna postpone that four week trial period uh, fur- further down the road, just because of the the restrictions. So I'm not sure if I answered your question there, uh, Victoria.
Would it be helpful, um, a couple of things I can offer up, Mario? Um, so we we issue a newsletter a couple of three times a year. And if you're agreeable, uh, we'd love to do an interview with you and and maybe run a series of articles on the service you provide over the course of the next year. Um, and try and build awareness that way. And then if if some of your presentation materials, Mario, are appropriate and geared to a broadcast audience. Not necessarily geared toward a particular dynamic with a particular class and particular school. But if if they're more, you know, appropriate for broadcasting, we're happy um, to share them on our electronic media and give them. And give them a place on our website, um, and and, you know, give give you a place on on our website for sure, you know. Um, so we can pick up that conversation if you like, and if there's something a little more um, complex in terms of outside the boundaries of the existing policy framework. I have, then we can bring some uh, requests to council.
I love that idea, that's remarkable. It kind of, I it reminds me, I think, a few years ago, I don't know if some would recall that, but I think I was. I've I've been almost near for eleven years, actually, it's going to be eleven years on the, on this Monday that I've been in the area. Uh, there used to be constable's corner on C J L S, if I'm not mistaken. It kind of had a little bit that din- that that dynamic, but uh, on the air. So I I I love the idea, I I'd be on board with that, as long as uh, my detachment commander, Staff Sergeant Simpson, uh, wo- would approve. Which, by the way, uh, I'm, I totally forgot, he apologized not to be here, he meant to be here, but he had other duties to attend to. Uh, he wanted me to send the apologies and I totally forgot about it. Um, but yeah, if he approves, then I'm totally on board with that.
Okay, uh, I see Jenny, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, Mario, I'm just curious, what grade level do you start talking about cybersecurity? Do you start it right at primary or I know that they're probably a little too young to understand, but just curious.
Actually, um, I've done as young as first grade, but I tailor my. So I have two or three different types of um, online safety. Uh, for the older ones, I'll go more into the sh- uh, sharing intimate pictures, sexting and all that. But I also have a generic um, online safety, um. Uh, for younger kids, like, kind of like, don't share your password. Um, don't, uh, you know, uh, never, uh. The basic stuff that we also sadly see some of the fraud scams, we also, the elderly, don't share your social insurance number. Like, it used to be before phone scams, now it's all online. Um, but more of a basic, like, basic security stuff and how to properly, uh, you know. Uh, secure passwords, secure, uh, trying to remember all this stuff. But uh, I I I I got a feeling with the um, uh, with the idea of Victoria. I think, I I think if we ever, if we can ever meet in person, I will bring actually a flash drive. And I could show all you guys all the presentations that are tailored. Uh, I even have one that I did for a friend's school, I think it was for Wedgeboard. Uh, it was just like all the common household danger signs logo, like the poison sign. Like, so if you see a a a product with that, like, that wasn't even provided by National Youth Services, I created that from scratch. I also had a career fair that some of the kids, the older kids wanted to know about our C M P career. I I create a PowerPoint for our C M P career from scratch. So uh, I'll I'll take whatever information I get from youths, uh, national youth services and other organization. But I always tailor it and I always kind of modify it for the appropriate age group.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Patty, then Trevor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I want to thank Victoria for this suggestion, uh, and of how can we help? I think that's really important and I I feel that it, you know, here we are. Our building is right next to Maple Grove, for example. And so I think by us showing interest in this as a, um, you know, the municipality of District of Yarmouth. What it does is it brings municipal council down to the kids' level to show that we're, we're supportive of what. You're doing and what uh, principals are doing and the fact that we recognize what's going on um, in school. And we're there to try and help if we can, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Trevor?
Yeah, and and um, certainly Constable Gujon, um, he 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 did mention. Uh, seniors at one point, so so it may be useful as we're going through this exercise, if you're doing something with the. With our newsletter to also include a a senior piece, not not, not as part of this. But is a, it is an aside, because uh, cybersecurity is something that that uh. Um, you know, it's important to all all age levels.
Absolutely, so I work closely with Ashley Rhino, which is the Senior Safety Coordinator for your municipality. I've done some presentations with her also, uh, Peggy Boudreaux was the one for Municipality of Argyle. Uh, I know even for Christmas, we delivered hot meals and there was a couple of houses that had some recent uh, break-ins. And I went in with, uh, the this last time was with Peggy, but the time before was with Ashley. Uh, to reassure and kind of just put some some safety measures in place. And um, if they have questions and all that, so it's definitely something I love to get involved with. I mean, uh, my main role is is school safety officer, but at the end of the day, I'm still a police officer, so I still respond to call. And I'm all willing to help out with the senior safety program as well. Actually have a binder and stuff with scams and all that, that's all ready to go in case I have to do a presentation with the seniors also.
Wonderful, it's it's a really important uh, topic, uh, cybersecurity for sure. I thank, thanks, wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't speak. As my fellow counselors and staff would know that usually I'm one of the first ones with my hand up, but I was trying to absorb everything. I don't have children in the school system, but I have a granddaughter who is five. And you know, I think of these things as, you know, alarming, I'm in my fifties. So all of these things are kind of foreign, you know, you know they're happening, but I think that anything, you know, and thank you to um. Victoria for, you know, mentioning how we can support you and your efforts. I think it's important that we do any, you know, anything that we can within our, you know, our power to help you and and support. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that and I hope actually that I get to, like, I see a couple of familiar faces, but I do get to hope. Uh, hope to, we get to meet actually in person, like, can actually visit when everybody's back in the office, so to speak.
All right, I see no more questions, this is your last and final chance. Well, I see no more, Mario. I I was, did have one question, but Victoria beat me to it in regards to how can we help you? Um, so I guess I'm not gonna ask the same question twice. But anytime the municipality post anything on Facebook, I try to to share it on my uh, personal and Warden's page. So, and the newsletter thing is certainly a another great idea too. So hopefully, uh, soon that uh, these COVID restrictions will release and we'll be able to meet in person a little bit more. It's been a strange two years, that's for sure. Uh, since.
For sure.
Almost, it's almost two years to the day, actually. I think it was in February, March, yeah, I I remember hearing about it about this time, so.
Early February, I think.
Yeah, I was on actually, I was on a cruise ship back when I first heard of it, so. I was glad to get off and get home. So Mario, I see no more questions and I apologize for butchering your your last name.
Don't worry.
And I'm not gonna try it again. So anyway, on behalf of the council staff and the residents in the municipality district here. But thank you very much for for giving us the opportunity to hear this presentation. And uh, we look forward to uh, working with you in in the future. So thank you.
Pleasure. Um, who do I reach out to for some of those ideas? Do I, I I know I have Jenny's email, which that's how I kind of got, uh, is she a good, the, like, do we keep it that way? And then if we have to reconvene in person, then we can make those, make those arrangements or?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I look forward to it.
Thank you very.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Night.